I tried. What did she say? She said she's got them for those who are somebody else.
Okay.
And the PD is going to have it posted on the court table, too. The area. Last week.
Got it.
We'll call a meeting order. You might be trying to run a school agenda. And the first item is going to be an update about this.
Excellent.
Jeff?
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Nice to see you.
Did you want to go on?
Yeah, I'll go on, sure.
And while Jeff is going there.
Go on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah. Okay. I'm Jack Frost. I chair, have the honor and pleasure of chairing the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund, along with my fellow trustees. We have Dana Fragakis and also Kevin Williams, Keith Williams, I'm sorry, and Captain Joe Ahern and Captain Troy Marchesi. And we are here for our annual State of the Pension Fund Report with our actuary, Jeff Amros. Jeff?
Excellent, thank you, Jack, and good morning, everyone. Good to see everyone. And you all get an actuarial presentation and a solar eclipse in the same day, so that should be a lot of excitement. Hopefully, everyone's good with that.
Right now.
Exactly. Well, my name is Jeff Amros. I'm an actuary with Gabriel Roder Smith and Company. I have about 30 years of experience, and I've been the actuary for the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund for about 15 years now. As some of you may remember, I provided a similar presentation as I'm going to today in December of 2022, and since that time, there's been several assumption changes in the pension plan, and we'll discuss those today. I will keep this presentation pretty short, you know, 15 minutes at most, if that's okay. The changes, the assumption changes were reflected in our October 1, 2023 evaluation report, and we just presented that to the pension board last, last month. In addition to these pension changes, the investment returns, how are the, the funds in the pension plan performing? Well, they've been performing very well. Since October 1, 2023, we've had very good returns, including six months into this fiscal year. That being said, fiscal year ending 2022 was a rough year for investments, not just for this pension plan, for all pension plans. It was a very challenging period of time, and due to that, there's been upward pressure on the required city contribution. We'll discuss that shortly. The required city contribution has increased by $2.2 million when comparing our October 1, 2022 report to our October 1, 2023 report. Was about $5.8 million in 2022 report, and it went up to $8 million in the most recent report. I'm going to go, I'll be flipping through the slides in a little bit, but just wanted to give background. It wasn't too long ago that the plan had some bigger issues. In 2014, the required city contribution was elevated to $10 million. And remember, now it's down to $8 million. So that was pretty high. The funded ratio, which is one measure of the health of the retirement plan, was falling each year. The level of benefits was being reduced each year as more state money was going to fund the pension plan instead of two share plan accounts for the police officers. But since 2014, there's been some very significant changes in the health of the retirement plan. Today, we'll discuss two main reasons why the health has improved pretty significantly since 2014. One of those reasons was the issuance of a $50 million pension obligation bond, and that's really helped out the pension plan, and we'll go through how that has helped the city as well, not, not just the pension plan. Additionally, there's been strong investment returns, with the exception, of course, of fiscal year ending 2022. ...compared to other cities. So.
Hold on just a minute.
Sure.
Is this going to affect the revenue? Okay, so they're watching the video later.
Of the pension. To share a plan. So, I won't go through that, but if any time you ever have any questions, always feel free to call me, and we could go through that. So let me jump to slide nine. And on that, on your presentation, I apologize about the numbering, but it'll be the top of page five that we're, we're starting with. So to discuss the, this slide discusses the history of the pension obligation, pension obligation bond. And again, in 2016, the proceeds from a $50 million pension obligation bond were deposited into the pension plan. That really helped the, the health of the pension plan. You could see the funded ratio, which is how much of the liability is covered by the plan assets, improved from 82% to 97%. And one of the components of the required contribution for the city decreased by $6.5 million. So once that money was infused into the pension plan, we had good things happening, as we expect. Funded ratio goes up, required contribution goes down.
Let, let me interject there, because I may have been the only one on the commission at that time, and I cannot overstate how huge that was. Commissioners, you may or may not recall, cities around the nation were teetering on the brink of bankruptcy because they couldn't fund their pensions. And obviously, it's not good optics when you're dealing with the unions to have an unfunded pension plan. So we, as a city, were really well positioned as a result of issuing this bond. And I'm sure you'll tell us, we'll, we continue to be very well positioned when you compare us to other cities around the country. So that was a huge development in 2016.
Totally agree. Yeah, so, and, and on the next slide, you'll see with numbers what that meant for the city. So if you look at the bottom of the slide, this is bottom of page five for, for you all, you could see, $50 million was put into the pension plan. Well, since that was put in, the earnings were $31.8 million. So the, the fund has earned $31.8 million, but the city still had to pay the bondholders because they issued a bond and had to pay them back. But they only paid $12.5 million. So the gain was a little bit short of $20 million that, that has been gained to date for issuing that pension obligation bond. You're earning really good returns, and you're only paying, I think, 3%, 3.5% to the bondholders, so that was responsible for the $19 million, and thank you for, for mentioning that.
The timing on that was incredible. The 3.5% was the lowest that they, the city had actually budgeted to put it out at 4.4%. And rates came way down. Mayor, it was your brilliance at that time.
And I wasn't even mayor then.
See how good you were?
Hey, but I'll take it. I'll take it.
Okay, top of page six for you all. In addition to the pension obligation bond, what else has helped the pension plan? Well, strong investment returns inside the pension plan. You could see a list of these returns, the, the annual returns that the pension plan has seen, and with the exception of fiscal year ending 2022, where, yes, it was a pretty large negative number, we've had very strong performance. Over these 12 years, the average has been 8.5% per year, which is very good on an absolute basis, and also relative to other pension plans that I work on. It's also very good. On the top of page seven, you'll see the results from our most recent valuation, the October 1, 2023 valuation report. And again, our October 1, 23 valuation report determines the required city contribution for next fiscal year, fiscal year ending in 2025. There were two components of the required city contribution. The first component, hopefully you could see it there, is the employer normal cost. And essentially, what that employer normal cost represents is the value of the accruals from the active police officers each year. Should stay fairly level as a percentage of payroll each year. Of course, if you add payroll, it'll go up as a dollar amount, but should remain fairly level as a percentage of payroll. The second component of the required city contribution are the amortization payments on the unfunded accrued liability. I know it's a bunch of words, but essentially, when there's gains and losses or plan changes or assumption changes, the city gets to pay for those changes over a period of time not to exceed 30 years. And you could see that second component is 4.86 million or 18.63% of pay. Another good thing that, that's been done is that, that next row item where it says "application of contribution stabilization reserve," this is a reduction in the required city contribution of $2.1 million. And I'm going to go through exactly how that works, but it allowed, it, it's really set up so we can maintain some, or we could reduce the volatility of the required city contribution in future years. So we try to mitigate that up and down and use this reserve that was set up for this purpose, and I'll, I'll show you that in a few, few minutes. On the bottom of page eight, here we talk about the funded ratio. And again, the funded ratio is just how much of the liability is covered by the plan assets. Well, we're a little bit short of 90% as of October 1, 2023, so 89.2%. That's good. I mean, we'd all love to have probably 90% of our mortgage paid off, and that, that's essentially what this is measuring. And just to give you an idea, we, in our office, service about 130 pension plans across the state of Florida, and the average funded ratio, we don't have all of them complete, but is in the probably very, the, the mid, maybe even a little bit lower, 80% range. So you guys are funded better than the average plan. Top of page nine.
I would like to comment, too, that two years ago, we were over 100% funded, and because of provisions in the plan, we were able to issue supplemental distribution to each of the retirees, that that year averaged $70,000 per retiree. So for many of the retirees who were making $35,000 every year, it was really a wonderful windfall and a great thing we were able to do. Well, of course, that was $19 million from the fund that went out, and then immediately the next year, the returns, you know, the market went south. So, you know, over time, it has worked well.
Yes. Yep. And that's a supplemental pension distribution, which is the, the topic on this page as well. And you could see, in order to pay a supplemental pension distribution, the plan has to have net actuarial gains since the provision was put in place in 1992. And as Jack said, a few years ago, it was able to be paid according to the provisions of the plan, but now, due to really fiscal year ending 22, the plan is in a cumulative loss position of $96 million. So, you know, we're, we're getting some good returns, we'll eat into that, but it may be some time until the next supplemental pension distribution is paid. On the bottom of this slide, you'll see that there was a $15.5 million contribution stabilization reserve set up on October 1, 2021, and, and that's increased actually to $17.7 million as of October 1, 2023. And the board essentially has a set of rules on how to apply this each year, to how to reduce the required city contribution each year. And as I said before, the contribution for fiscal year ending 24, the fiscal year we're in now, the, the stabilization reserve used $2 million to offset the required contribution. Next fiscal year, we'll use $2.1 million to offset that required contribution. On page, bottom of page nine. I'm sorry, let's see. Yeah. So bottom of page nine, you, this covers the assumption changes that were reflected in our October 1, 2023 valuation report, and we presented a nine-year experience study report recently to the, to the board last month. And as a result of that, we changed some of the assumptions. We changed the salary scale, we studied everything, salary scale, retirement rates, withdrawal rates, disability rates. We included a load for pre-funding supplemental pension distributions, drop and share plan interest crediting rate. So we made a lot of changes to, to the assumptions. We also smoothed investment gains and losses over five years instead of four years. But, you know, with the assumption changes, some caused increases, some caused decreases, there was not a big effect. The net effect of all the assumption changes was an increase of less than $30,000 for, for the year. On slide, top of page 10, here, we talk about what is going to happen to the required city contribution in future years. Is it going to go up or down? And a lot will be dictated by, are we going to have really strong investment periods of time, like we did have for the last year and a half, or poor investment periods of time, like we did from 2000 through March of 2009? If we have those periods of time, contribution's going up for the city. If we have what we've experienced recently, contribution will be going down. But there's a couple of things we do know, that we, when we calculate the required city contribution, we use the smooth value of assets, and that doesn't recognize all the good or all the bad in the year it happens, it spreads it over time. But that asset value is up here, whereas the real asset value is $51 million lower than that. So that difference, that $51 million is deferred investment losses. We're going to recognize it over the next several years. We just don't know if we'll have more losses, hopefully not, or offsetting gains to that. And just to give you a sense, if we just said, "Let's reflect all the losses today," contribution for the city goes up by about 15% of pay. That's the bad news. The good news is, we're six months through this fiscal year, right now, we have very strong returns. S and P 500 is up 21%. This pension plan, as of last week, is up over 11%. So again, we're going to eat into that, that bad news that I just spoke about, as long as this continues for the next six months, you know, we saw of a while ago. Last slide that I wanted to cover, bottom of page 10, here we have a comparison. This is a little bit outdated, it's from our October 1, 2022 reports, because we don't have everything yet for 2023. And this sort of measures the normal cost for your plan and a lot of neighboring cities to, to your pension plan. And that normal cost, remember, it just represents the value of the accruals from your active police officers or firefighters each, each year. And this slide is really meant to give you an idea of how the benefit level in West Palm Beach Police compares to other neighboring cities. So it's not meant to be an exact science, because some of these plans are using different assumptions, and that's going to move that normal cost rate, could be somewhat significantly. But just to give you an idea, and you could see that the normal cost rate for West Palm Beach Police on the bottom there is 20.15%, and the average is 23.33%. So pretty much in, in line with the average. And this year, it went up to over 21%. So, you know, very close to the average. But it's something that I've, I've presented in prior years, I wanted to bring that to you today as well. So I tried to keep it below 15 minutes, hopefully I succeeded, I didn't check the time before. But that concludes my presentation, and happy to field any questions or concerns you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions, comments, commissioners? All in all, it's good news.
Yes, yeah.
Very good news.
The, the plan is in very good shape. Yep, on, on an absolute basis, you know, you have almost 90%, and on a relative basis as well to neighboring cities.
Yeah.
So we're, we're in good shape.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
The next item, commissioners, is kind of an information. I, I did want you all to know that I, I have heard some of your concerns when it comes to policing, and I wanted to make sure you knew we were going to address those. Now, obviously, when you're talking about police and police strategies, we've got to be very careful as to what we say publicly. We, we don't want the bad guys to know what it is we're going to do. And so what you hear will probably be limited, but we will get, I, I promise you that I will have the city administrator work with the chief and the appropriate staff to schedule one-on-ones with you to address your particular concerns. I know Commissioner Ward, you wanted to know more about stratified policing, what we're doing there. Commissioner Lambert wanted to know strategies to combat aggressive driving and speeding, as well as traffic safety, photo enforcement. And then Commissioner Fox, you had a, a concern about additional police resources. So don't be disappointed if you don't get your specific issue addressed completely now, but they will be coming around, meeting with you one-on-one to give you more detailed information about what your particular concerns may be. And again, the failure to do that in this public forum should be obvious. We don't want to discuss strategies in, in the public. So Chief, I don't know if you want, want to supplement that or go into any, any additional detail, but the floor is yours.
Yeah, I mean, we've been attending the meetings, obviously, in Commissioners Ward's and Commissioner Fox's districts, and some of these issues that are on, up for discussion today, of being discussed, you know, stratified policing, and then having additional resources assigned to Commissioner Fox's district there relating to the most recent increase in violent crime in those areas. So well aware of them. I think we have the plans that are heading in the right direction, but I want to just touch a little base on, you know, the stratified policing strategy that we have in the department is based on recognizing places where crimes occurring, people that are actually engaged in that criminal activity, and problem-solving strategy to, to address them. And then the fourth part of that is the community engagement, which I think has been very huge with us over the last few years, once we adopted the stratified policing. I think when we look on every day at 10:30 at the police station, we have a crime meeting. We look at the data, and we look at, you know, what happened the night before, and, and we analyze that on a weekly basis, every Thursday at a big crime meeting, where we'll bring everybody in the room that's actually part of our strategy, and have an open discussion as to what's actually working for us in some areas that were, that are deficient, where we can make some adjustments. And I think that when you look at what we're discussing internally, sometimes when we're in these community meetings, we kind of miss things, and it's the community that actually bring it to light. The data takes us one way and shows us and paint one picture for us, but the community give us a whole different aspect. And when we can put those two together, I think that's building a strong community and addressing the concerns and reducing crime, and we're all doing it together, along with our neighbors in the community.
Okay. Any questions, again, without going into a lot of detail on strategies, but any questions for Chief and his, his team now, Commissioner Ward?
I guess overall, I was hoping we could, just because it was adopted, and, and, I mean, you're, you and I are at the meetings a lot about, talking about stratified. Is it, is the methodology, how's your team feel that it's working? Are there things you've changed from the original methodology that you guys find are better? Again, we've seen the increases, but I think sometimes when you talk about the data, I, I've heard multiple things, as we're talking about data when it comes to serious crimes and how we can target that, and you had the huge bust in, in the North End versus some of those hotter, you know, calls, topics. Are, are we reacting to higher number of phone calls in certain areas like we are with those major crimes issues? But overall, the methodology, is it working? Do you guys like it? Are you changing it at all? I wanted to get into more of those details.
Well, I mean, it's, it's set to change and adopt different strategies as we go along. I mean, whatever works today, and if we're not reaching, reaching our goals, we can make those adjustments. That's why we have a daily meeting at 10:30 in the morning. That's why we have the weekly meeting, where we bring in all of the different divisions in the department, and then we bring in some of the community, I mean, some of the other city departments, you know, you know, sanitation department's been very big with us, dealing with the homeless, and, you know, their timing of picking up this abandoned property has made a definitely a difference based on the complaints that we're getting. So I think the strategy is effective. However, is there room for change? Yes, and that's something that we look for every day. What are the changes that we can do to make it better?
You had a follow-up?
Well, knowing that now for a while code has been under you all, I know that's a constant discussion, how is that going? Do you think your officers are learning more about how to identify code issues, that they can let the code officers know? I know we're still working on different hours versus nighttime, when you're seeing, I don't know, potentially, you know, like north, the Northwood, the Northwood Village, because that's my district. Somebody has a, a permit for a restaurant, and now they're operating as clubs. Are we finding that your officers are really identifying these code issues? And that was the goal, right, of everyone working underneath each other? How is that going?
So that brings code into a discussion on our weekly meetings. You know, Captain Capper, they report to him, and he has a.
Monthly meeting, right?
Yes. Meet with code. And, and it's basically like a CompStat type of form. Everybody goes over all of the different cases. We have our community outreach officers that attend those meetings because they deal directly with the homeowners and the business people in those neighborhoods that bring those concerns and that part of those discussions that kind of integrates with code. So that's where the integration comes in. I think prior to us working, having code assigned to the police department, it was a number of meetings where a lot of people wanted to talk about code when, you know, when we were there to talk about law enforcement. Now these meetings have switched, where we can actually talk about both and how they in, interact with each other.
Any follow-up? All right. But, but again, we can schedule a, a one-on-one if you want to get into, drill a little bit deeper in some of those, those issues. Commissioners, any other questions, concerns? You sure?
Are we going through the list, or I wasn't sure if there was a topic by topic, or you were just asking?
No, 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 I mean, all, all of this, as I said at the beginning, all of these topics will be covered in more detail in one-on-one meetings. It was not meant for, unless Chief, you have something to say kind of at the top level about any of the issues here. I, I had asked these to be put here so that you commissioners would know that I'm aware of your concerns and what the strategy is going forward. It was not meant to have a more detailed discussion in this forum, because we're talking about strategies and this is a public meeting. But I didn't want you to think that I did not hear some of your concerns, and what the plan is, is to have the chief and the appropriate staff sit down with each of you one-on-one to go into more detail about your specific issues. And those of you who don't, who aren't listed here, if you want to, if you want that meeting and you have some issues, so the chief can prepare, please get that information to me through the city administrator. So that was the purpose here, is to kind of bookmark this. A, let you know that I have heard you and what the plan is going forward. Okay? Yes?
I just have a comment then. I just want to say thank you, Chief, and to your whole team. About two weeks ago, we were able to have two meetings in the Northwest. One night, we met with all the business owners, the next night, we met with the residents. There were members of your team that came from the bike unit, and I think you recognized how excited all the neighbors were to see you, to see your team in action. We had some people come to our public comment last week to thank us for all the work that you're doing. I think it's really making a difference for the communities to see that we have been listening to them and taking their concerns seriously. I will look forward to hearing more about, I guess, the data that comes out of this pilot program. I'm very hopeful that we can continue it, and I know that that will be a budget issue, but I do want to say thank you for that. And I also, just to the points about the speeding, and I think some of that will probably have, I, I believe we'll have to work with engineering on some of those issues, such as, you know, speed bumps or stop signs that are needed, but I look forward to hearing more from you in our one-on-one. So thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Ward?
Back to stratified. So how do you guys feel like it's coming with it? I know that we had an audit a while ago, before my time, about overtime, tracking overtime, making sure that we're utilizing resources. You've done a fantastic job increasing our, our workforce. We were down, and obviously, that requires overtime. Are we seeing a more of a flow better? Are we seeing less overtime needed and more strategy based upon stratified policing so that we're putting the resources where we need to and not overworking our officers and spending more funds on overtime? We notice that trend at all?
Well, I mean, you know, we're on track now. I think, you know, June is going to be the first time since I've been here that we're going to have all of our vacancies filled. I mean, it's going to take a while for people that go to the academy and be trained, but I think next year is time, you know, we're going to have a fully staffed department and for the first time, and, and we're able to look at these areas. I mean, good example here is this bike unit. I mean, you got a community that said they want the bikes. Was that really on our radar? We thought it was, you know, open drug sales, and we need to deal with this in, in another way of, you know, reducing open drug sales. And, you know, the bike unit goes over to this neighborhood, everybody loves the bike unit. I mean, it, it worked out great. unit. I mean, uh it it worked out great. So we're looking at all of these things. We're trying to build strong community in the sense of listening to what the community says and putting all of these things together and maximizing the use of our resources. And that's basically what our job is on a daily basis.
Commissioner Bozzi?
Thank you. Uh for our one-on-ones, if you could just add uh policing and traffic enforcement along Okeechobee Boulevard and Northlake Boulevard. I know I've been speaking with you regularly about that, Chief.
Yeah.
And with Chief Spitera also. And I know that you guys have some things in the works. And I just, if you could, you know, follow up with me on that, just because I do have a lot of residents that are constantly contacting me with regard to the congestion on both of those roads right now, particularly Northlake Boulevard. So thank you.
Will do.
President Warren?
Thank you. Just for clarification, the role of the code enforcement officers that relates to the items we're talking about is primarily to identify nu- uh nuisances or violations and issue citation is correct, but they don't do anything because it relates to deterring activities or um detaining or doing anything like that.
Oh, they don't detain people. They do cite them. And, uh, you know, when it comes to a criminal violation, and now they transfer that information to us, and then we then take enforcement action.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So keep uh an eye out for calendar entries for the for the one-on-ones, and uh you could drill down deeper in those meetings. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Okay. Uh item three, Center for Smart Streetscapes, CS3 update. Chris, Jason?
If you want, I mean, we'll go back and forth. Okay. Okay. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a this is an exciting presentation because we've been, this has been a project that we've been working on for some time. Myself and Dr. Hausstrom, Jason Hausstrom from Florida Atlantic University. Um and we have have a lot to share with you as kind of an update on what's been happening. And this is bona fide um uh smart city efforts that's going on here with new technology that we're looking to deploy um in the city. So uh we're going to do a quick overview, but we're not going to talk to you about it. We actually have a really great video that I think just kind of encompasses. It's only about a little over four minutes, so it's not too long, that really kind of summarizes the project and sort of, you know, clearly illustrates what the Center for Smart Streetscapes is all about. Then I'll turn it over to Dr. Hausstrom, and he'll give you a little bit more of an update on essentially where we're at. Um we do have some robust outreach efforts going underway, so I'll touch on those. And then a lot of sort of upcoming things that uh we have in the works, as well as highlighting the goals that this aligns with with the city, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you only have. So with that, I'm going to start this video, and it's a it's a good summary.
The mission of the Center for Smart Streetscapes is to advance livable, safe, and inclusive communities through applications built on real-time, hyper-local streetscape intelligence. Our vision is to apply a digital layer over our physical infrastructure to help reshape urban dynamics at the human scale. The Center is a partnership of five universities, bringing together experts from diverse fields to create the new application ecosystem to transform America's streetscapes. The headquarters is directly across the street from Columbia's new Manhattanville campus and adjacent to one of our urban test beds, serving as a living lab for the Center. CS3 leverages three unique and complementary test beds. Newly deployed urban technology infrastructure in West Harlem, New York, West Palm Beach, Florida, and New Brunswick, New Jersey offer proving grounds for piloting diverse technologies within distinct contexts. So probably the most unique facility to support the ERC's mission is the Cosmos test bed, right here in our backyard in Harlem. This is a high-speed, low-latency urban wireless communications test bed with edge computing, so the computational supports very close to the street, and that means that things can happen in real time. We're looking at infrastructure, sensing the entire scene, so we envision very precise situational awareness capabilities. This kind of technology could, for example, provide the overall computational support for autonomous vehicles and improve road safety. The second major urban wireless test bed runs along a central corridor in West Palm Beach, Florida, and this is primarily to study mobility patterns of pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. Mobility data will enable the city and researchers to continuously monitor impacts resulting from specific development initiatives to optimize accessibility for residents. The Smart Mobility Testing Ground in downtown New Brunswick, New Jersey is a two-point-four-mile open road living lab for testing smart mobility, including connected vehicles with high-resolution sensor cover from roadside infrastructure. The team is developing a digital twin model of the entire testing ground to enable high-fidelity visualization, simulation, and application testing. While the real-world urban test beds are the final proving grounds for technologies developed within the Center, considerable fundamental technological exploration will first occur in simulation or within labs at the respective core partner institutions and industry collaborators. Local communities are integral partners in CS3's engineering model of co-production. Maximizing engineering's potential to positively impact society's most vulnerable requires diverse perspectives, workforce development, and innovation ecosystem.
The most exciting thing about this project is the community involvement at the early on stage, in the preliminary design stage of planning out what Harlem should have as it relates to technology.
We're investing in underserved communities. We're striving to really address equity and inclusion for everybody in the city of West Palm Beach.
Lehman College within the City University of New York adds critical leadership in the sociology of race, urban science education, and talent pipeline programs.
What's very obvious in underserved communities is that STEM is very important. You could feel the students say, oh, I have this in my toolbox. And what's interesting is when you do that, people feel like they're valued in their communities. You have diverse talent, and with that diverse talent comes diverse thought.
The Center for Smart Streetscapes, understanding that it's going to give us great data on our infrastructure, is really going to inform policies and procedures and operations of how the city provides services to its residents.
One of the key privacy advantages of being supported by edge computing is that computation is happening close to the street layer within communities, so data is not always shared out to the cloud.
I love the fact with Streetscapes that they're intentionally thinking about the ethics. So, you know, with Streetscapes, there's a lot of surveillance involved. What that speaks to me is that they care about what the community thinks, feels, and the way it will respond.
The businesses, the arts and culture, the community organizations, the universities, the office tenants, you name it. This project brings all of that together in a way to take us into the future through technology.
It's really being able to take technology and actually listening to what people want.
So now, I'd like to introduce the faculty member that we've been working with. He's a professor and director of the iSense Institute down at FAU, Dr. Jason Hausstrom. Jason?
Thanks, Chris. Mayor Commissioners, thanks so much for the opportunity to present our our updates to you on this exciting project. I'm going to spend just a little bit of time kind of contextualizing what we saw in this video and summarizing it a little bit. But I want to start by emphasizing that this is the national center for smart cities. And so I am so incredibly proud and excited that West Palm Beach is one of three anchor cities in that vision. And so this is an opportunity for West Palm Beach to be on the center stage for the whole of the country in how we integrate smart cities' technologies in ways that advance the city and in ways that are consistent with the needs, constraints, and sensitivities of the residents that we serve. The Center for Smart Streetscapes is focused on five key engineering areas. I'm not going to get into too much into the technical details, but I would like to summarize them briefly. One, we're advancing new wireless technology. Wireless technology everywhere. Wireless speeds at the speed of fiber optics, but wireless everywhere, beneath ground, on ground, in and air. Taking the power of the cloud and moving that power, that high-performance computing power, directly to the streetscape. And the reason that's so important is because it reduces latency. When we interact with the cloud, all that computing power, that latency, that time that it takes for us to communicate with the cloud and to get information back from the cloud introduces delays, delays that make it impossible for autonomous vehicles, for traffic signal timing, for warning vehicles of pedestrians that might not yet be in the line of visibility. That's thrust one. Thrust two is focused on the future of computer vision, the ability for sensing devices, cameras, LiDAR sensors, and other sensing modalities to understand with incredible fidelity what's happening within the streetscape. So this isn't just understanding where people are. It's understanding where are the people, where are the vehicles, where are the cyclists, where are the where are the scooters, where is the trash, where are the raccoons, where is everything in between, and doing it in a way that is entirely anonymized and protects personal privacy. That's thrust two. Thrust three is focused on integrated security, privacy, and fairness across all of the technical aspects of the Center. Artificial intelligence plays a key role in what we're doing within CS3. And we know from reports all over the country, we know from failed projects all over the world, that AI can be biased depending on the ways in which it's trained. AI can work very well for one type of individual and not work well at all for another group. And so we're working across thrusts to ensure that the AI we integrate is safe, secure, private, and fair. That's thrust three. Thrust four, we call public interest technology, and this is one of the areas that's unique within this center across all of the centers that the NSF has funded. This is a social science thrust, which you typically don't see in an engineering research center. And it's focused on understanding in fine-grained ways and tracking over time community legibility. Do residents really understand the types of technologies that we're rolling out? And that's so important because we need the residents at the table helping us to identify the applications to be built, the technologies to be deployed, and the ways in which those technologies will be configured to meet community needs. We cannot bring residents to the decision-making table if they don't understand the basics of the technology that we're trying to roll out. So legibility training, community ideation, these are focal points for what we're doing in CS3. Everything we do in CS3 begins and ends with the communities that we serve. Thrust five is all about applications, and I'm going to spend some time talking about that. As you heard in the video, we have three test bed cities. We're rolling out new technologies in West Harlem. We're rolling out new technologies, have rolled out new technologies already in West Palm Beach, and we're rolling out new technologies in New Brunswick, just outside the Rutgers campus. These are not isolated test beds. We have data exchange back and forth. What we learn in West Palm Beach, we are translating to Harlem and to New Brunswick. What they learn in New Brunswick, what they learn in West Harlem, we're translating as appropriate to West Palm Beach. It's an incredible collection of test beds. Now, this project, really, it began with the West Palm Beach Mobility Intelligence Project, which I continue to be so grateful that the mayor, the commission, and and really all of the city has supported. And so this project be- began with a focus on understanding in a fine-grained but anonymized way, how do people use Clematis? So there's lots of interesting technical stuff behind the scenes, but this is in some sense a non-technical project. It's focused on answering three simple questions. Where do people want to go? How do they get there? What are the problems they encounter along the way? That's really what the West Palm Beach Mobility Intelligence Project is all about. Today, we have approximately fifty-five sensors that are deployed all along Clematis. They measure the probe request that your cell phone sends out when it's looking for a connection. We don't look at any traffic data. We don't know anything about the individual. We can't track the phone over time. All we can measure is the strength of that signal, and that allows us to triangulate in real time where people are. And we can then record those traces to understand how the city's mobility infrastructure is being used. Now, all of this has been public from the beginning. One of the promises that we made early on when we began talking about this project with the city commission and the mayor back shoot in two thousand and nineteen was a commitment to total transparency. Any data that we collect immediately at the point we collect it is available to the public. It's provided through a public interface. We've we've designed tools that allow the public, that allow the city to to make sense of the data that's being collected, to understand mobility patterns over time. All of that's available through a very poorly named website, www.mobintel.com. This was supposed to be mobility intelligence, but the naming, of course, it doesn't sound so great. So it is mob in, not dot com, my apologies, mobintel.org. And encourage you to to take a look if you haven't used that. And Chris, I'll turn it back to you for our outreach activities.
So, uh Mayor Commissioners, one of the, in addition to partnering both with the funding of the initial project and then also using our infrastructure and some staff times, one of the other ways that the the city is really helping this project is through the engagement component of it. And so as we sort of build out that communication system, and it's really critical to the overall success of the Center because it is built on what people are comfortable essentially putting in the public realm. So we don't want to install anything or put in technology that either people don't trust or they won't use. So as a way to start engaging the community on a regular basis, the Knight Foundation, through its generosity again, came to us with a program called Digital Trust in Places and Routines. And this was a system that was essentially developed by a group called Helpful Places out of Toronto. And through a series of symbols and and language and building out a website and some other things, we are essentially piloting this system of communication to help people understand what this technology means, what we're going to use, and how it's going to essentially affect their daily their daily use of infrastructure and and living within the city. So you'll start seeing signs that are up and and established up and down Clematis Street, as well as some websites and and other portals that will help connect folks to the understanding of this system. And we are also doing a series of surveys to help collect some feedback from folks. We started these actually at our green market. Uh one is explaining to folks what what type of information and what type of systems they would like, and that's on the the FAU side. And then the other side is really if the communication tool that we built here with this digital trust in places and routines is something that is effective. So actually measuring the two the two efforts in order to better better have better success with the overall program. So it's it is real research that is being conducted here. So what we've done is built out a calendar of engagement that includes folks in the historic Northwest because we're actually installing some cameras there and having those conversations regularly with the folks in the historic Northwest. We've got events coming up with the Downtown Neighborhood Association. They have actually requested because they are familiar with this project, so we're going to be reaching out to them, as well as the business community through the Chamber of Commerce. So we have a series of touchpoints that we are going to conduct and have been conducting, and those will continue until about May where we'll then reassess and understand, okay, has this has this communication tool been effective and coordinate with the Center for Smart and Connected Streetscapes to to make sure that it is in fact something that has been effective, and if not, do we need to change? And if it is effective, do we want to continue to use it? So we have much more coming up. So I'm going to talk just a bit about the applications that are coming. This is a center that has a minimum lifespan of ten years, so it's funded through the federal government for a ten-year period. We're in the process of bringing on industry partners with the intent of providing sustainability beyond that ten-year period. NSF calls this graduation, but that's a nice phrase for the money runs out, and you have to find a way to support it through other funds. We're going to be pursuing applications across five different themes over the next ten years: road safety and traffic efficiency, public safety, assistive technologies, future of outdoor work, and hyper-local environments. I want to give you a sense of one new application that we're in the process of prototyping now in the city of West Palm Beach. We're going to use this as a mechanism to get community feedback on the application before this goes public, but I'm really excited about it, and I'm delighted to be able to share it with you today. So I'm hoping that it plays. So what you see here is a live feed on the right-hand side of that screen. That's a live feed from a camera installed in West Palm Beach. Now, one of the problems with camera technology, and it's the same issue that we faced when we were working on the original Mobility Intelligence Project, is that it doesn't preserve privacy. At the same time, we want to provide the information that's captured within that raw feed. We want to capture analytics about how many cars passed by, what were the directions, pedestrians, potential proximity issues, so was it
pedestrians, potential proximity issues, so was a pedestrian too close to a vehicle, something we think of as a near miss? We want to have information on where illegal dumping is taking place, we want to have information on where are the raccoons in backyards and in neighborhoods. And we can capture all of that, and we can share that with the community, but to be consistent with the promise of sharing immediately everything we collect, we want to anonymize this. And I think this is an incredibly slick tool for anonymization. So you probably have heard in the news this notion of something called a digital twin. And so the idea behind a digital twin is that you have some digital representation of what's happening in the physical world, so that you can study the physical world in a digital context before making changes within the physical environment. We call ours a digital cousin, and that's because it's not quite the physical world. So what you see on the left-hand side, the way that this system works, is that for each camera that we have access to or that's installed within the city, we can take that background image without cars, without bikes, without people. That's the image. And then, in the real feed, as we're identifying pedestrians, vehicles, trash, raccoons, et cetera, we can turn those into avatars that appear within the scene that's rendered to the public. So there's no concern about revealing faces, there's no concern about revealing license plates, traffic details, et cetera. So we're incredibly excited by this. This tool is available for the city to begin testing immediately, and so we are very excited to be able to share that with you. There's a nice analytics dashboard to keep information about how many pedestrians, how many bikes, how many scooters, and of course, raccoons.
We mentioned raccoons because that was actually one of the major issues that have actually come up in the historic Northwest. There's just a lot of issues with raccoons sort of damaging property and intimidating folks that live in the neighborhood. So, I know, I know, I know, it is funny, but it's, they can get a bit aggressive. So we're using technology.
We'll make sure to add that to the list of opportunities for our city.
We will, Mayor.
To address the raccoon problem. Thank you.
A couple of really exciting things that are coming up. So the first Innovation Summit tied to the Center for Smart Streetscapes will be coming up actually next week. And I've been invited to sit on a panel for the Innovation Summit to talk about what essentially we've been doing in the city, so it's a great way to represent the city of West Palm Beach and all of our efforts here, as well as, I was recently invited to sit on an Industries Panel, which I'm not quite sure what that's about, but happy to help with the exchange of information, which is very exciting. And so we're actually taking this effort on April 16th and actually piggybacking it with some other contacts in the New York park system to understand how some of their parks work. Dr. Houshram will actually be joining me on some of those tours. That'll happen the next day on April 17th before I fly back to West Palm Beach. And so we'll really get an idea to understand how some of the operations occur in some of the New York City parks, and be able to bring back some of those best practices, as well as understanding how we could maybe apply some of those best practices with the technology and the Center for Smart Streetscape. So it's very, very exciting, because as you know, we have a lot of things happening with our public parks, Curry Park, the waterfront, so on and so forth, where I think a lot of this information can be applied real time. Next is a, another event that was actually funded by the Knight Foundation. This is another panel with the folks from the DTPR program, Jackie Lu from Helpful Places is going to be leading this panel. But Knight Foundation has asked, as well as funded this panel, of a Greater and Greener Conference, which is, again, another conference on parks and how we've sort of using this tool to inform folks. So it's another great opportunity to sort of share our experiences here in the West Palm Beach with, sort of, on a national stage with all of these other cities. And we will also gain a lot of insight into how other people are managing their public spaces and public realms as it relates to technology. So another great event that's coming up later in June. Jason, we've actually got a great way to incorporate some talent building. Do you want to talk about this?
So we're going to be, this summer, recruiting six high school students from the area. We're looking for students from the historic Northwest to participate in something we call the My Streetscape Program. This is a program that was initiated at Columbia, a fully in-person event that was initiated at Columbia last year. The idea behind that program is that we recruit students from the neighborhoods that we serve, we train those students in basic social science methodologies, basics of human subjects' research, human subjects' protections, survey design, data analysis. We teach them a bit about computing, and they serve as ambassadors to the neighborhood and back to CS3. So we work with those students, once they've been trained in these methods, to help us understand what are the challenges facing their neighborhoods, and what are the best ways in which technology can be brought to bear to solve those problems. This year, we will be running that program in collaboration with Columbia. Columbia will provide the social science training that will be handled virtually. We will provide the engineering and computing training through FAU, and that will be done through a combination of in-person and virtual. Each student will participate for six weeks. It will be held in West Palm Beach. It will be a 25-hour-per-week program, and each student will receive a stipend of approximately $200, $2,500 for their participation in the program. So we're really excited to be able to do that. We've ordered the hardware, we're ordering each student a laptop, we're ordering embroidered bags. Chris had a great idea of having My Streetscape bags, so each student, each kid, has a sense of ownership in this, in this program. So we're just incredibly excited by that.
So just as a quick, we're wrapping up here on many of the goals, you know, I just went through just to kind of understand how many goals, you know, this is actually fulfilling with, within the city, and these are just a handful. I'm sure there's many more. Really, I actually couldn't delve into the mobility plan, didn't have a little bit of time, but I'm sure there's a lot in there as well. But we're hitting a lot of marks with this overall effort. And with that, really, just, I want to give a big thanks to the IT department, Miguel, Patrick, and then also Joe Mingle over in Public Works, who was out here very early in the morning, helping us hang the sensors, and continues to be a big help when it comes to just helping the FAU team make sure that when we do install the sensors, they're done properly and safely. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you, oh, Jason wants to add one more thing.
I just want to add one quick thing. Many of you have heard me say this before, but it's so important to me that I'm going to say it again. Our team has had the good fortune of being involved in municipal projects for more than 20 years now, and we have never had a partner like the city of West Palm Beach. So we're just incredibly grateful for the partnership that we have with the city, for the collaboration that we benefit from, from the great people that we work with. So this is a project that could not have taken place, obviously, without West Palm Beach, and we would never have received the NSF ERC, which we're so grateful to benefit from. So thanks so much.
Yeah. And, sorry, Mayor, one last thing. I know Jackie and Jason from Helpful Places are watching us from Toronto, so want to thank them as well. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, and I do want to set some context here, because Commissioners, this is a, I'm reminded of the statement that Joe Biden whispered into Barack Obama's ear when the healthcare plan passed. And what he said is, this is a BFD. I'll let you Google that to figure out what it is, what it really means. But this is a BFD for our city to be part of this. Remind us, A, how many times we applied to be part of this, to get this grant, and then also how much the grant is?
Sure. So this is a program that runs on a cycle of approximately two to three years, depending on the federal budget. We competed for this one time before. So if I remember my numbers correctly, there were on the order of 250 to 300 total applicants for this program. That was winnowed down to approximately 25 applicants, that was then winnowed down to nine, and then it was winnowed down to four. We made it to nine in the prior round. We spoke with the city, we spoke with the National Science Foundation to understand how can we improve, what do we need to really push this over the edge? And the feedback we received from the NSF was that this project and the partnerships were too important, they were too important to give up on, and that we had to go after this one more time. I just add that this is a, this was a significant investment for everyone involved, for the city, for the universities, for all of the partners, for the 93 stakeholders who signed on to support the project. And when we went after it the second time, we were successful, so that was not so long ago. It's a significant grant, so it's $52 million over a 10-year period. It is allotted in single-year increments. So each year, we receive the funding, and then we must report to the NSF extensively on the progress that, on the progress that we're making within the project. So this is in the form of annual reports, written reports, site visits. The NSF will eventually come to West Palm Beach to see what we're doing here. And so that's where we are in the process. We're right now in the middle of year two.
And thank you for reminding us, because again, Commissioners, West Palm Beach is in a very, very visible situation, something which all of you should be proud of, because you certainly approved us going after the grant, and as Chris has said, he's on panels in New York and Seattle. So this is exciting stuff. It's exciting stuff for our city to be a part of, and I'm so proud of, that we're in this position. Questions? President Warren?
I'll agree, Mayor. I think this is very exciting, and, you know, vision isn't always well-received, but it's wonderful when it works out the way that we're seeing things unfold in front of the city of West Palm Beach. So I think that we're all very happy to be a part of this. I'd just like to reiterate that we are intentionally, proactively, and consistently working to safeguard the data that is collected and the information that is shared, and that we're protecting that information from those with malicious intent. Because as we're excited about this, there are some people that may not be as excited as us, and we'd just like to continue to reassure them that we're doing everything reasonably possible to protect information.
Absolutely, yes. So I'll speak to this in two different ways. So one is on the data that we store. So one of the principles that we adopted early on in this project was that we would never store things which we would, might be afraid to have revealed publicly. So we're very careful about what we store. Everything you see on the website, that is, in a sense, the totality of what we have. So we have no secret data, there's nothing private that could be revealed that isn't already available publicly. Now, when you talk about the raw data, which is much more sensitive, so camera data, for example, which is much more sensitive, that's where we have to be very, very careful in how we protect access to this data. And so we've been working very, very closely with the city IT team to ensure that when we have access to city feeds, that we're providing those feeds only to the applications within CS3 that process that data and immediately discard it. So our pipeline is to use the raw data as quickly as we can and to discard it, and then to only have that kind of digital cousin data, which is available for the rest of the processing pipeline. Now, further down the road, we have another team that's working on something called differential privacy. Differential privacy is a relatively new privacy technique that provides mathematical guarantees on what can be learned when data is revealed publicly. And so this has been used recently, for example, to study information leakage in the context of New York City's City Bike Program. So we're working with the thrust leaders in that team to understand specifically for the West Palm Beach Mobility Intelligence data, what could be learned through the data that we're sharing publicly, and how can we apply differential privacy techniques and other security mechanisms to provide mathematically proven guarantees on what can be learned and potentially exploited.
Quick question. You mentioned this internship program. How will you be selecting the students? And by the way, I'm glad that you're getting them from the historic Northwest. That's very consistent with my vision of making West Palm Beach a community of opportunity for all, so we're giving those students in that community what I think is a tremendous opportunity. So how do we select the students?
So it's through a combination of mechanisms. So our long-term intent is to have a full-scale application process. That's how it's run in, that's how it's run out of Columbia for students from Harlem. In our first year, because we're beginning small, we want to begin with a cohort of six students, really get the program off the ground, let us work some of the kinks out of the program in the first year, which I'm sure there will be. And so we're working, we plan to work with the Arts and Technology Center to identify students through their pipeline programs. We've been working with Alicia Nguyen to potentially identify students through her contacts, but we are really open. So I'll share with you what I shared with Alicia, I suppose, last weekend, or maybe the weekend before, when we were at the Green Market, that we don't know the students in the historic Northwest. And so if there are particular students who would be good ambassadors and who would preferentially benefit from this kind of immersion experience, please let us know. So we will not have a normal application process in year one while we get this program off the ground. So we are open to recommendations if folks have students who they think would enjoy this program. And I also wanted to mention, I didn't mention it when we were talking about this before, but we also include an on-campus component. So we think it's incredibly important for high school students to spend time on university campus. That takes some of the fear out of it. It provides some exposure to what campus life is like, provides opportunities to engage with other undergraduate students, with graduate students, with other faculty members, to benefit from the infrastructure. And so we're working on a plan to bring the students a minimum of four times from West Palm Beach to FAU to spend immersion days. And right now, our plan is to, is to provide Brightline tickets for those students to travel to Boca. So they'll travel to Boca, we'll pick them up in a shuttle bus, we'll bring them to campus, we'll spend the day, and then we'll bring them back.
How exciting, how exciting. District Commissioners, I encourage you to use your particular spheres of influence and see if we can do everything we can to get the word out. I will certainly, if my administration, Diane, let's work on spreading the word about this opportunity as best we can. Chris, you?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm working with Dr. Houshram on the details now, and when we have those ready, Mayor, you know, we'll bring them to Communications Attention, and we were planning on working through a robust awareness campaign to make sure that the students are aware, you know, that are in the city of West Palm Beach, primarily the historic Northwest.
Well, that's exciting, that's exciting. Any other questions, comments, Commissioners? Very exciting stuff. Thank you, stuff is a technical term, by the way. Thank you all very much. It's amazing to see how far we have come, and we look forward to further updates.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to talk about visualizing sea level rise planning, project update. Chris, you're on again.
Yes. So another great project that the city has been partnering with Florida Atlantic University on. And this was, this was a grant that we, we were awarded through the Resilient Florida Grant, and we have been working with Dr. Rene, Dr. John Rene, who's actually a resident of the city of West Palm Beach. So Dr. Rene is with us here today. And we've conducted a very extensive planning effort here on visualizing sea level rise using VR technology, virtual reality with the goggles and everything. So the FAU portion and the research portion is concluded, and to share you the results of that and to talk about the overall project is Dr. John Rene. Welcome.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Commission, and everyone here. Yeah, it's exciting to present the results of, you know, of an exciting project. So, you know, to begin, when we started this project, personally as a resident of West Palm Beach, I hadn't noticed all that many occasions where Flagler was completely inundated with water. But through the course of the project, I think we probably started the grant application process about four years ago, and three or four years ago, probably four years ago. And throughout the course of this project, we are seeing the more visible impacts of king tides. And so, you know, we talk about king tides, and when I first moved to Florida 10 years ago, and I lived in New Orleans for 10 years before that, I didn't know what king tides were. You know, I thought king tides was like some sort of a phenomenon where a tide just happened to be big. But really, king tides is the very front end of sea level rise, right? Because it's the highest tide of the year, right? And so, you know, we think of tides, and we think they get high, they come in, and they get low, and they go out, and that's a cycle that happens about twice a day, you know, tied to the gravitational pull of the moon. But what we don't really understand in the public about tides is that they also ebb and flow over the year and the seasons, and there are tides actually during, typically in the spring and the fall, that are higher high tides than, you know, other times. in the spring and the fall, that are higher high tides, uh, than, you know, other times of the year, than perhaps in the summer and the winter. Um, and so the king tides represent the highest of the high tides. And so as sea level rises, um, we, we call this king tides, and I think it's a bit of a misnomer in some ways, because I don't think the public generally understands that king tides is really the highest of the ti- high tides that's really being impacted by sea level rise. And so you can see here some recent images of the king tides that we had last fall. And, um, this project, uh, was, was awarded funding in collaboration between, um, FAU and the city of West Palm Beach, funded by, uh, the state of Florida, uh, formerly the, uh, Department of Economic Opportunity, Resilient Florida Grant, funded through the U.S., uh, Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, to promote resilience planning at the local level. That's really important, right? The, the whole intention of this grant was to engage with the community, which I'm gonna summarize, and then to provide, uh, the leaders of the city, you all, um, the data and the information that we've collected, so that you can act upon that to enhance, uh, your adaptation planning moving forward. So our project team at the city, uh, was led by Chris, uh, with Penny Redford, the Sustainability Lead. Um, I was the lead at FAU, along with my team, uh, Serena Herman, Fred Bletcher, who's, um, a professor and, uh, Associate Dean in the College of Engineering, uh, Giuliano Khalil, who is the head of Virtual Planet Technologies. Uh, they're the, the private company that has been working with us, and then Anna Carolina Muller-Curaz from Stanford University and their VR lab. Um, Virtual Planet Technologies has been working with Stanford for many years, and now, um, with us, uh, and, and on some exciting projects, uh, around the country. And then we also worked with some local, uh, partners, um, Jonathan Payne and Amir Colini, um, that helped us with this. So we, uh, launched the project in February of 2022. Uh, we built the interaction in the fall of 2022. We engaged the community, starting in, uh, actually, I believe that should say January of 2023, I apologize for the typo. Um, so in 2023, uh, we engaged the community and then, uh, kinda wrapping up the project here in 2024. Um, our study area was centered, um, on Osprey Park and included Chappelle Park and Getler Park. And so the project's intention was just on public spaces, public parks. So really, these three parks, we didn't, uh, in the project chose not to focus on private property, although it's very obvious the impacts on private property when you see the maps and the interaction. Um, you can see below here, this is the map from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration of Project, Sea Level Rise Projections at Four Feet. Um, I'd like to point out, though, that these sea level rise projections at four feet are also very, very similar maps of what a category four or a category five hurricane could potentially produce within, uh, you know, hurricane season in, in several months from now, right? So while we're talking about sea level rise, what we're really talking about is, uh, flood inundation, and there could be multiple causes of that. The sea level rise, once it comes, maybe in, you know, fifty or a hundred years from now, won't recede, but, you know, if we have a Cat Four, Cat Five hurricane later this year, or sometime in the future, um, that, you know, that will flood and then recede, obviously. Um, so the, the project, what we did was, we, uh, used a, uh, virtual, uh, reality goggles, um, and we created a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree film. So, a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree film, so we had two groups of people that, that one looked through the VR goggles, and you could kinda look all around and visualize it. The other one had an iPad, and in that iPad, a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree film is a movie that you're watching, and you can move the screen around and see the same thing, and the screen moves, um, but you're not immersed in it, 'cause you're looking at a pad. And so the, the research portion of the study was to see what are the impacts of being fully immersed in the VR versus the impacts of watching this same movie, it was about a nine-minute film that we produced, um, on a two-dimensional iPad. And then folks, um, answered a survey, um, we had, uh, you know, a number of public engagement opportunities, and still continue to go on. We're gonna be exhibiting, uh, later in the month at the Cock Science Museum. Dr. Sylvia Earl, who's a famous oceanographer, um, often referred to as the female Jacques Cousteau, is gonna be presenting, uh, at the Cock Science Museum later this month, and we're gonna be there with our VR experience, uh, for the public to engage in. Um, and we had two-hundred-and-sixty-nine completed surveys for the research portion. You can see here a list of the different events that we exhibited at, um, ranging from the Green Market, Lagoon Fest, Public Library, um, the, uh, Science Symposium, and, um, lots of other kind of related events like that. And, um, in the findings, uh, we found that the people who experienced the virtual reality, as opposed to those who watched the same exact film on a two-dimensional iPad, found that the adaptation strategies of, uh, seawalls and nature-based solutions, uh, depicted to be more effective, um, in the VR, as opposed to three-hundred-and-sixty-degree video, the emotional spot, response was a lot higher. And this is something that our colleague Anna from Stanford University, um, she has been finding in other similar studies around the country. Um, people were more receptive to be informed about future strategies to mitigate the impacts of flooding in their community. So the idea is that, you know, if you can put somebody in this virtual environment, they can really better embrace and understand the information being communicated to them, connect that information to them, um, in, in an emotional way, um, and then being more willing to engage in solving the problem in the future. Uh, fortunately, uh, we purchased, uh, fifteen sets of goggles, and the equipment is not that expensive, and I believe the library even has, uh, some equipment as well, lots of public libraries have this. Um, and it's also available for free download for anybody that has the MetaQuest goggles. I think the MetaQuest goggles cost about two hu- uh, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, depending on the models that you get. And, um, more and more kids are buying these goggles for, for gaming, right? And so, um, you know, the idea is that, uh, they can, you know, use this in, in a, uh, to be educated in an informational way. One of the things we're excited about, potentially working with Dr. Sylvia Earl, is to maybe create some, um, uh, educational opportunities for, uh, kids, uh, K through twelve, uh, well, probably more like, um, five through twelve, because you don't want the little, little kids wearing the goggles, but, uh, middle school and high school kids to, to learn and educate, um, in, in a way, that's a, that's a project we're, we're currently working on right now to try to get off the ground. But going back to the study findings, um, that we, we showed three different strategies, and they kinda build upon themselves. So don't think of it as like, you know, um, option one, option two, option three. Think of it as like, uh, option one is just doing nothing, right? That's no intervention. Um, option two, uh, is, is not really option two, it's, it's actually part one, which is building up the seawalls, uh, and, and then part two of that would be then to build a living shoreline. And these are all things that we're already doing in West Palm Beach, so it's not like what we're proposing, um, is, is radical in any way, it's just being a little bit more, uh, concerted, I think, uh, to be able to take, uh, to prioritize the funding and, and, uh, build it in a way, if we're gonna be building living shorelines or building new islands, that those islands are also serving other purposes than just, um, wildlife enhancement, which is great, but why not have wildlife and coastal protection as well? So, s- eighty-one percent of the people ranked, uh, building living shorelines, which, you know, as their favorite option. And again, um, I, I don't like that word, "option," it's, it's like, that's where they wanna get to, that's their end goal. Um, and, um, so, you know, only four percent of the people that went through the survey said that no intervention was the best option. Um, so, and, and-
Go, go back to those numbers, 'cause they didn't add up. So, the, the, obviously, that's more than a hundred percent, so s- explain to me, uh, eighty-one percent says their favorite option, does that mean that was their first choice?
Yes.
And then seventy-one percent had seawalls as a-
Yeah, because they, they could pick their first choice or second choice, and it was a, it was a ranked choice, that's why it adds up to more than a hundred.
All right, so it was, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, and I'll, I'm gonna, at the end of the presentation, show you a link to where you can go to, to watch the video, or even download the VR experience. Um, but what we did, and this was the part of the grant that connects this to the local planning and policy context, and that's really, I think, why we're here today, is to say, what we did was, we looked through the, uh, different plans and policies, uh, in the city. Uh, we looked at fifteen in all, but we're just kinda highlighting several of them here. So in the West Palm Beach Comprehensive Plan, Element Two, um, notes that, uh, design principles and procedures, public realm, uh, promote accessibility and connective, connectivity for the general public to waterfronts. And Policy 1.1.2 says, "The city shall require a professionally accepted and applied environmental assessment or environmental impact statement." So if we build seawalls, uh, and, and Penny Redford was very much a, a big proponent, proponent of making sure that people can remain connected to the water. You know, we have hot summers here, and, um, we, we, uh, don't have as much access to that water during hot times. And in the study area, uh, which includes, you know, within the vicinity of the Northwest and other neighborhoods, uh, on the north side of the city, we, we, I experienced, just being in the study area a lot, that the kids would go there and, and actually fish and wade in the water, sometimes they would swim, there's a little beach at Osprey Park. And so if we come in and build seawalls to protect us against sea level rise and cut off access to that water, we are creating a negative impact to the residents of those neighborhoods who need to be able to engage and touch the water as a way to cool off during our hot summers. So what we suggest is, you know, um, looking at strategies and tools, right, to try to get to that living shoreline as a way to both protect the, our, our, you know, protect our property from the impacts of flooding, and be able to kind of allow that land bridge and that natural bridge over those seawalls, so you wouldn't even actually see the seawall, 'cause it'd be under your ground, and then it would taper down and be able to create these beautiful parks, much like Peanut Island looks like today, or other places in our region, uh, to be able to engage it with the water, the wildlife, and all that. Um, the, uh, conservation designation is intended, uh, to designate publicly and privately-held lands of environmental importance, set aside primarily for conservation purposes of conserving or protecting natural resources or envi- or environmental quality, uh, permitted uses such as wildlife management, passive recreation. Again, um, trying to promote green infrastructure, uh, nature-based solutions, uh, within any kind of policy to consider as you're looking at updating the comprehensive plans. Element Two of the Comprehensive Plan on Future Land Use, uh, talks about residential designations. Um, there's different, uh, single-family low-density in the study area, single-family medium-density, single-family. Um, again, our study was focused on the public parks, but it's hard to ignore the fact that between the public parks, there are private properties. Um, and so, you know, moving forward, that's gonna be an important consideration for you all. Um, assess patterns of single-family or other designations to potentially encourage density in lower-risk areas, um, which is congruent with Objective 2.1 of the master plans, say, or the Comprehensive Plans, that the city shall facilitate and encourage infill development, especially within the eastern portions of the city. Um, Element Eight of the Comprehensive Plan talks about-
Okay, you, you're not gonna go through each one of those, we, we get it.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, this is the last one, this is the last slide. Yeah, and, and the last one is about recreation, open space, uh, maintaining it, improving it, uh, new development and, and recreational, uh, redevelopment orders shall not be issued unless there's evidence the city's access to public parks are restricted in any way. Um, again, this kinda builds on that. Um, I, I, I like this quote from the mayor, um, he noted that "The virtual reality experience was quite enlightening, the technology demonstrated in unavagably clear terms the devastating impact of sea level rise in our city. I was also impressed with the demonstration of the impact of the mitigation measures that could be employed to counter effects, uh, counter the effects of sea level rise." Um, this is our website, I would encourage you all to go to it, futureflooding.com. You can watch a fifteen-minute video that we produced, that's like a mini-documentary summarizing the entire project. Um, it was really well-done, uh, by local firm Paint Productions, and, um, it, it really captures the entire study very well. There's also links here to download the engagement, if you wanna watch it on the 2D, on your iPad, uh, or if you have the glasses and wanna download it for the immersion experience. Um, so that's, uh, where I'll stop now and see if there's any questions. And I just, again, I wanna thank you all, uh, for your support of this project.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, have you all had a chance to do the VR? Okay, Cr- i- is there any way you could arrange for the commissioners to, i- i- it is, it's amazing, i- it really is. Um, and, and I think it will, um, well, let's just say that when I did it and the water started coming up, I, I literally thought it was coming up around my, my legs, that's how realistic it was, and I said some words my mother wouldn't be proud, uh, that I said, because I was really shocked. But anyway, I think it's, if you can arrange for the commissioners, uh, to have that experience, I think it's, uh, worth, worth the time, commissioners, uh, to do that, and it will really, uh, uh, bring home how, uh, important, uh, this, that this project is.
I also wanna note that, you know, it's, uh, not necessarily coincidence that I'm presenting after Dr. Halstrom, uh, because I play, I'm, I'm also a professor at FAU in the Urban Planning Department, but, um, you know, have a, have a, a, a small role on his project with the Center for Smart Streetscapes. And so one of my hopes, as we go forward into the future, is to kinda bring these two ideas of virtual reality and the Center for Smart Streetscapes closer together, um, because, you know, this is cutting-edge stuff, and I will note that, um, as, as we've discussed before, um, there's not a lot of cities in the United States that are on the cutting edge of research like West Palm is doing. So again, thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes, and, uh, right when you were showing, thank you so much, this is really fascinating, both presentations were, um, but, you know, when you mentioned those parks, just because I live right down there, I literally was at Osprey this morning, that beach, I really, I wrote sand right away, because it is so important for, you know, that experience of coming in and seeing the water, having that breeze, and I think it's just, I'm reiterating this mostly for my colleagues, because that, you know, if we don't teach children to experience and understand and, and love that aspect of why we all live here, the water and our environment, they're not gonna protect it in the future, 'cause they don't understand it. And so I, I lo- how many children actually go into that park all the time is just phenomenal, um, and I hope to continue to push that, and I think that the living, the, the seawalls is probably, or the living, um, greenery that you, that you proposed, while it's expensive, I think it's the best way to go, because we, we wanna continue to have that, we don't wanna just build walls up to block out that view. Um, the one thing that I wanted to mention while we were talking about that, 'cause you mentioned private properties and seawalls, and I don't know, um, I know, I've actually had this conversation very recently in my community about some of the private, um, properties and their seawalls, one, it actually connected to Osprey Park, and whether it's a code issue and how we're do- what we're doing to make sure that we're monitoring that and making sure that our private property owners are maintaining their seawalls, so it's not impacting, uh, I just throw that out there, because it has been a discussion recently, and we don't want a private property doing all this work, and then the private property potentially pulling down our seawalls as well. Um, so, but thank you.
We, we'll make note of that and, um, have somebody get back to you on that. Any other questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I wonder, this is probably a question more for Chris or administration, and when, looking at the ideas that are coming out of this, and I guess where we are in terms of the sea level rise and just environmental issues, I mean, what is our next step, I guess, Chris, when I look at, you know, the options that came out of what the preferences were? Of course, the preferences are, you know, but how, how far away are we from actually having to implement that? I mean, is this something that's a now issue that we need to start talking about? Or is this a ten-to-twenty-years-away issue? Um, but, and thank you for all the research.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, the first step was really to take the findings, um, and sit down with Development Services, so we've done that, um, so that, um, obviously Rick and his team's aware of it, Penny. And so they're going through it now, and we're reviewing it, but then, then we obviously have to sit down with city administration to talk about, okay, you know, what is, uh, what do we wanna do next? Because obviously, a series of comprehensive plan changes, that requires, um, some, some official actions by the board. Um, so those steps will be forthcoming, um, as appropriate, and as we work through, um, you know, with, uh, with the city commission and the mayor, um, on those items. But really, um, you know, this project was started, uh, while I was still Economic Development Director, that's why I've kind of ushered it through, uh, to this point. And so now it's really gonna take, um, sort of additional analysis from some other staff, um, in the city, and so that's the step, that's where we're at.
President Warren?
Thank you. I, I would love to receive this, uh, presentation, if this can be shared with the commission. Uh, Mayor, I think this is probably-
You mean this deck?
Um, yes, this deck.
Yeah, can, can you use that?
Absolutely.